You all knocked me out. Yeah, it's gonna be warm.
Oh my goodness, Randy.
You could have left it off, Randy.
Is somebody looking for us?
This is crazy. Oh my gosh. We have a lot of interns in here, a lot of students. This is great. Hi, students! Hi, interns! You having a good summer? Good. Good. Okay, good afternoon, everyone. I, before we start with our agenda, I do want to take a minute to discuss some troubling recent developments in our city. Respect for the laws, democratic governance, and the separation of powers is the foundation of representative democracy that underpins our city's local government. When these norms are eroded, the result is a weakened democracy. The effect is a government that is less responsive to those that it represents and the lowering of safeguards that protect the public interest. Over the past few months, we've seen attacks against the rule of law with unprecedented disregard for laws passed by the independent legislative branch, abusing the power to declare a state of emergency. We've seen a rushed charter revision commission that circumvented the public transparency, feedback, and scrutiny of the legislative process to advance certain changes to law that do not require a charter revision commission or voter referendum. An independent and separate legislative branch of government is essential to hold the executive branch accountable. As the city's legislature, the city council changes laws throughout a robust, open legislative process where the public can provide input and testify. On average, a public safety bill goes from introduction to passage in 292 days, and all other bills take 280 days. In the process, we hear from all stakeholders, including the executive branch and its relevant agencies, advocates working on the issues, and members of the public. This is how we craft thoughtful and meaningful legislation that improves the lives of New Yorkers by ensuring city agencies meet their needs. It is ironic and an immense hypocrisy that the commission inaccurately claimed deficiencies in the legislative process to justify its actions when it actually failed to come anywhere close to meeting the baseline expectations of the council's process. The commission existed for less than 60 days and released concrete proposals less than two days before voting on them with absolutely no opportunity for public testimony on them. In fact, it even amended those proposals just hours before its final vote with no public notice or explanation of its changes until minutes before voting. The commission claimed these changes were a product of being responsive to feedback, but the reality is that they occurred after learning of the threat of lawsuits to reduce their risk of legal exposure. At the same time, other changes proposed by the commission have sought to give the executive branch unprecedented control over the legislative branch's processes. Centralizing more power within the executive branch by giving it control over the independent legislative branch's process sets a dangerous precedent. It would leave the government less responsive to New Yorkers and have long-term implications for the functioning of our city that go beyond this current administration and council. This isn't about a disagreement between this mayor and council. It's no longer about advice and consent. This is about our local democracy and whether we have the government that is accountable to the people of our city. This is tantamount to mayoral control over the duly-elected legislative branch of the city of New York. We've also seen independent oversight agencies become the target of attacks, whether it is those responsible for civilian complaints of police abuse or campaign finance. This disregard of democratic governance and processes cannot be normalized. The strength of our city, our government, and our democracy relies on upholding these principles that safeguard public confidence and trust in our institutions. It is important for all of us not to lose sight of this by minimizing these circumstances as routine to the political process, because it is not, and it should not be, and it should not be unless we're all okay with losing the strength of our democracy. Now, we'll move on to our stated agenda. First, we'll vote on the following land use items: Bronx Metro North stations rezoning. A neighborhood rezoning boosted by a historic commitment of local infrastructure and neighborhood investments secured by the council that will add approximately 7,000 new homes, revitalize the local economy, and activate key corridors surrounding forthcoming Metro North stations in the East Bronx. The council proposes to modify this series of applications from the New York City Department of City Planning to better align with neighborhood character by adjusting heights and densities in key areas, returning minimum parking requirements to those in the existing zoning, and adjusting MIH options to better reflect incomes throughout the Parkchester, Van Nest, and Morris Park neighborhoods in the Bronx. These land use changes will facilitate the creation of new housing and homeownership opportunities at a time when our city faces a dire housing crisis with not enough homes for New Yorkers. To support the development facilitated by this zoning, the council has secured a capital commitment package from the administration totaling approximately $500 million that will provide upgrades to parks and open space, improvements to local schools, street safety improvements that will benefit pedestrians, cyclists, and drivers alike, critical investments to sewer, waterline, and flood infrastructure, and capital funding for upgrades to the 49th precinct. This historic investment and planning effort would not have been possible without the tireless efforts of Majority Leader Amanda Farias, Land Use Committee Chair Rafael Salamanca, Zoning Subcommittee Chair Kevin Riley, and Councilmember Kristi Mar morado. We also thanked the Department of City Planning and Administration. 3033 Avenue V rezoning will facilitate a new nine-story mixed-use development including ground-floor retail and approximately 109 housing units, 27 of which are affordable units in the Sheep's Head Bay area of Brooklyn in Councilmember Narcissus District. The council proposes to modify these actions by removing MIH Option 2 and adding the deep affordability option. 197 Berry Street rezoning will reduce existing development parking requirements from 142 accessory parking spaces to 42 in order to convert existing parking spaces to a self-storage facility containing 300 self-storage units in the Williamsburg neighborhood of Brooklyn in Councilmember Gutierrez's district. The remaining 42 parking spaces would remain accessory to the residential building. Wings and Seafood Sidewalk Cafe, the council will vote on disapproval of an application for a revocable consent to operate a sidewalk cafe in Councilmember Holden's district. We will also vote on two applications in Councilmember Wrestler's district. 500 Kent Avenue will facilitate the development of a new 23-story commercial building with ground-floor retail and waterfront public access in the Williamsburg neighborhood in Brooklyn. The council proposes to modify these actions by clarifying in the associated restrictive declaration how certain mitigation measures will be coordinated with appropriate city agencies. 712 Myrtle Avenue will facilitate the construction of a nine-story mixed-use building with approximately 62 units, including 15 permanently affordable units in the Bedford-Stuyvesant neighborhood of Brooklyn. The council proposes to modify these actions by removing MIH Option 2 and adding the deep affordability option. Lastly, in the area of land use, we will be voting on two applications in Minority Leader Borelli's district. Arthur Kill Terminal, a zoning text amendment landfill action, special permit, and city map change to facilitate the development of a waterfront site just south of the Outer Bridge Crossing in Staten Island into a Marie Terminal specifically designed for the staging and assembly of offshore wind components, which are essential to supporting New York's transition to green, renewable energy. The council proposes to modify the proposed text amendment to require that any project seeking City Planning Commission authorization for zoning relief under the proposed text amendment must support the city's green energy infrastructure. And Princess Point will facilitate the construction of new map streets and the development of 108 detached single-family homes in the Prince Bay neighborhood of Staten Island. Next, we'll vote on the following finance items: A transparency resolution approving new designations and changes of certain organizations receiving funding in the expense budget. A pre-considered resolution sponsored by Councilmember Justin Brannon amending an existing 40-year Article 5 tax exemption for one rent-stabilized building in Deputy Speaker Ayala's district. A pre-considered resolution sponsored by Councilmember Brannon renewing an existing 40-year Article 5 tax exemption for the preservation of one rent-stabilized building in Deputy Speaker Ayala's district. A pre-considered resolution sponsored by Councilmember Brannon authorizing a 40-year Article 11 tax exemption for the preservation of one rent-stabilized building in Councilmember Salam's district. And a pre-considered resolution sponsored by Councilmember Brannon authorizing a 40-year Article 11 tax exemption for the preservation of one rent-stabilized senior building in Councilmember Salam's district. The Bronx, Manhattan, and Queens Borough delegations of the council have also approved the following appointments to the Department for Aging's Advisory Council that will be voted on: Sophia L. Reed, Mayung Mikim, and Mark Merity. Today, we will also vote on the following pieces of legislation: Resolution 372 sponsored by Councilmember Rita Joseph calls on the New York City of Education to provide support for a student newspaper at every high school recognizing the important role of student journalism. I also want to acknowledge our students that are here today from the Youth Journalism Coalition who advocated for this resolution. Thank you, scholars, for your hard work, and thank you for being here. Introduction 745A sponsored by Majority Leader Amanda Farias would require the Department of Transportation to publish information on its website about bicycle and micro-mobility ridership in the city as well as a description of the projects it has undertaken to enhance the safety and movement of cyclists and other micro-mobility users on the streets and bridges under its jurisdiction. This bill will provide a transparent, data-driven perspective into the work of the department to keep New Yorkers and all street users safe. The website will be updated monthly when data is available and at least once per year. Now, I invite Majority Leader Farias to the podium to discuss her legislation.
Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you, Speaker, for letting me speak about the bill. I'm proud to be passing my bill today, Introduction 745, requiring DOT to conduct an annual study on cycling activity in the city for the previous year. On the DOT website, it reads that "New York City's Department of Transportation's goal is to accelerate the growth of safe cycling by providing a system of bicycle routes that traverse and connect all five boroughs while also creating a dense, fine-grained network of bike lanes in communities where cycling is already a popular mode of transportation." Intro 745 ensures that this is not just the goal, but the standard by bringing concrete data to the table to assess and reassess what works, what's not working, and where we need additional services. With more than 900,000 New Yorkers riding a bike regularly and our city's concerted effort to build more bike lanes, it is clear that transit safety and innovation is a top priority for this council. The study outlined in the legislation will require the department to identify key information like frequently biked streets and bridges to be able to make data-driven improvements to micro-mobility citywide. This study and the legislation will work to maintain New York City's status as one of the most transit-rich cities in the world and allow for more people to feel comfortable on a bike and for our cyclists and delivery workers safer on their daily rides. I would be remiss if I did not take a small moment to also speak about Bronx Metro North as already mentioned in detail by the speaker. The success of this rezoning and the modifications we're voting on today is really a testament to the city council's collaboration, our dedication to the communities that raised us, and our love for our home borough of the Bronx. Not only will this rezoning bring much-needed affordable housing, more local jobs, greater transit accessibility, but we'll also see substantial infrastructure upgrades throughout the surrounding areas that have been desperately needed for generations to come. Thank you for the additional time, and thank you all.
Introduction 460A sponsored by Councilmember Sandra Ahng would require the Department of Homeless Services, or DHS, to report on the feasibility of contracting with community-based organizations to accept and process applications for shelter intake for families with children. The Commissioner of Homeless Services would be required to deliver the report to the mayor and council no later than one year after this bill goes into effect. I invite Councilmember Ahng to discuss her bill.
Thank you, Speaker. Today, with the passage of Intro 460, we will take an important step toward making our city's shelter system more accessible and compassionate for homeless families with children. Currently, families are forced to navigate a system that asks them to travel miles, often with young children, to reach the PATH intake center in the Bronx, the only intake center for families in the five boroughs. No family should endure the added burden of a long, difficult trip across the city just to access emergency shelter they desperately need. However, we know the first stop for many families in crisis is not the PATH Center, but their local community organizations. They're same organizations that's been working tirelessly in the front lines, providing culturally competent and in-language service that immigrant community rely on. These community-based organizations are trusted. They're present where families live, and they're already doing much of this important work. They should be empowered to do even more. That's why this legislation is so important. By requiring the Department of Homeless Service to study the feasibility of partnering with these local not-for-profits to process shelter intake's applications, we are taking a common sense approach to serving homeless families where they're at rather than making them come to us. I look forward to working closely with the Department of Homeless Service as they conduct this study. Together, we could find ways to streamline the intake process and reduce unnecessary stress placed on some of our city's most vulnerable residents. This is about making our system work better for those who need it the most. I'm confident with the support of my colleagues and partners in the community, we can achieve that goal. Thank you to Speaker Adams for the leadership and support, and I look forward to the city council's vote on Intro 460.
Thank you very much. And Introduction 123A sponsored by Deputy Speaker Diana Ayala would prohibit DHS from requiring children to be present in person at an intake facility when their family applies or reapplies for placement at a homeless shelter. There is an exception for when DHS requests to remotely view a child and is unable to do so within 24 hours or when a child has not checked into their assigned shelter by the shelter's curfew on the day following placement. I invite Deputy Speaker Ayala to the podium to talk about her legislation.
As I melt, I think I'm convinced that I'm allergic to the lights. But thank you, and I really want to shout out Councilmember Ahng's bill because I think that it's an important bill. I think, you know, most people think of it as a, you know, something new, and it's actually something that, you know, used to be done many years ago. When I was in shelter, there were PATH centers throughout every borough. The fact that we are now limited to just one and that people from far away, deep into Queens, would have to then, you know, travel under the stress that they're already, you know, facing, right, and feeling the threat of being homeless is a difficult process. It's, we don't want to add any undue burden on anyone. And so, looking at different innovative ways that are cost-efficient to ensure that we have this service at every borough is really important. But while we're doing that, my bill, what my bill would do is very simple, is that it would not require that a parent bring a child with them, right, that we can video chat and still have that connection with that child and know that that child is part of that family, but not have to subject that parent from having to bring the child physically to PATH and sit there for hours and hours on end, which is what happens during the pandemic. The agency opted to do virtual, which was great, which is kind of the intent of this bill. So this bill will simply now codify what they're already doing. And, you know, I want to thank them for that because, again, you know, and I keep coming back to my story, but I remember going into shelter, and I had a one-year-old in a carriage. They don't want to sit there. They're hungry, they're restless. They don't want, you know, want to sit in one place for a certain amount of time. And sometimes, that, you know, back then, it could have been anywhere of, you know, 24 to 36 hours. We've since reduced that, so families have to be placed somewhere by a certain time, but it's still hours and hours that children and, you know, would have to endure those conditions creating the stress factor, you know, that we're trying to eliminate for those families. So I'm really excited about the bill and, you know, equally excited about Sandra's bill as well. Thank you so much.
All right. That concludes our stated agenda. With that, we will take on topic questions.
Yes, Speaker, on the Bronx redevelopment plan, what can you say to New Yorkers about how soon this type of thing might make a difference in their lives? Given that the MTA's plan with the Metro North stations isn't until 2027, and a lot of the housing might take closer to a decade there. Some people hear about it, they get excited about it, but the reality is it doesn't answer the immediate housing crisis.
Thank you, Andrew. You know, as with any, with any entree into building, new building, it's something that certainly doesn't happen overnight. So this will take a while to happen. We're talking about 7,000 units. We're talking about a lot of other amenities and a major, major facelift to three districts in the Bronx. So I agree with you in that in the immediate future, we may not see as much as we need to see in the immediate future, but certainly, this is going to address the larger-scale need for housing and more housing in the city of New York, particularly in those three districts in the Bronx. Thank you. Oh, yes, Amanda, please.
Oh, sorry about that. Just want to add on a little bit to what the Speaker's also stated. Part of this and a part of the negotiations that we went through is also looking at the five-year and 10-year capital plan throughout the agencies and their commitments. And so, not only are we looking outwardly into a timeline around the housing, we also got solid commitments for FY '26, FY '27 in our schools, in our parks, in the street infrastructure, in sewer improvements. So there are things that are, the people are going to immediately see within the next handful of years: dynamics that are going to shift, seats that are going to open up, programs that are going to happen in schools, bathrooms that are going to be renovated in parks. Some of these parks are also jointly operated parks that are going to also benefit the students at the school. So there are parts of these investments where I'm happy to share with you all the things that I got committed and we secured. But we're going to see improvements over the course of years as the housing is also getting built. And so that, people are going to be able to hold on to and see the immediate benefit their tax dollars at work through this commitment, even though we're going to be waiting for some of the housing to be built.
Hi, Speaker Adams.
Hi. Hi, Michelle.
So I also wanted to ask about the Bronx rezoning. Obviously, it's a separate plan from City of Yes, but, you know, they share the same theme of creating more housing through zoning changes, right? So do you anticipate that this is just clearing the first hurdle in a push to create more housing around the city that's only going to get more difficult in the coming months?
Oh, thank you for the question, Michelle. You know, the negotiation of neighborhood rezoning, it doesn't really determine the expected negotiation on the citywide text amendment that's not yet before us for review. So it's difficult to draw conclusions as to what one has to do with the other. The City of Yes proposal is very vast, it's wide, and it's particular for every district in the city of New York. So it's a little bit different. But as we always do, and you heard the great negotiation from this one here, from things that happened in negotiations regarding housing and the elements around, the amenities around housing. The council is going to examine and negotiate every application on its individual merit. Yeah?
Actually, I have a similar question about the Bronx redevelopment. Councilmember Kristi Mar morado told the coach she worked with the city to make sure the Bronx redevelopment would include 300 million of infrastructure improvements. Can you talk about that or other compromises, changes behind the scenes to get everyone on board with the proposal? And then, is the passing of this proposal a positive sign for City of Yes housing? It sounds like you...
Just answer that part, yeah. And I'm going to let Councilmember Farias answer the first part.
So I think, for the most part, what we try to do, especially between Councilmember Mar morado and I, we border one another, we have the housing applications as well, and hopefully, we have an interconnected network of improvements. So for myself, on my side of town, we secured nearly $200 million in commitments in terms of different infrastructure, something that Councilmember Mar morado and I share, are 170 million in, like, sewer, local infrastructure, about 70 million in Department of Transportation efforts. So, yes, I think there were a lot of conversations around how can we ensure that there's an interconnected network? How do we make sure communities that are shopping in one another's communities, that our students are going into one another's schools, visiting each other's parks, have a better flow of traffic, of mobility, of shared spaces? And so there was a lot of workings around there on the items that we secured between some of the larger infrastructure projects around safety infrastructure, lighting, even getting, like, MTA commitments to have security personnel on each of the sites and to have cameras and things like that that we, both of our communities, shared and asking for. Does that answer your question? And we can give you a breakdown, too, on the commitments. Well, we secured, we secured over $500 million in commitments from the administration on all four stations and the housing projects that are within this application. So that involves looking at parking studies, for example, in Councilmember Salamanca's district or in Councilmember Riley's district, where he has expanded bus service there to additional $10 million for the 49th precinct in Councilmember Mar morado's district, and items that we shared in our parks, schools, street infrastructure, lighting, sewers, and pipes and things like that to prevent flooding, things like that. So I can totally send you the full breakdown of everything? Okay, yeah. So we shared a lot of those in terms of gunning for what were the improvements that we needed for our communities, but they were definitely spread across with securing over $500 million.
Hi, Speaker.
Hey.
Two more questions about Bronx Metro North.
Stay close.
In terms of the negotiations, would it be fair to say that you were nudging any of the members in particular, maybe Councilmember Mar morado, to sort of get to a yes on this? And a second, just to follow up again on City of Yes, with all the caveats in mind that you just laid out, this idea of sort of signing onto the zoning changes exchange for infrastructure improvements, capital commitments, is that a dynamic that you expect might be in play on City of Yes that you might sort of take on with the other?
You know, there are going to be a lot of dynamics in play for City of Yes. A lot. As you've seen the results coming through community boards, other places, the hearings have been really, really informative as far as what the communities want. So we're going to have interesting negotiation around and fully, fully want the communities involved in that. So, yeah, we're going to be dealing with a lot of different aspects of negotiation. As far as nudging colleagues, our goal, and I've made no secret for anybody in this room, you all know this, our intention when it comes to great projects for the city is always to get to a yes. That is our goal. That is our commitment to New Yorkers for getting housing and getting affordable housing and getting good things for the city, getting new things for the city, is for, you know, for us to be in agreeance that that is what the right thing is. So, you know, according to each council member, how we get there, what they need per their community involvement and what the community is telling them. Likewise, my own district, when these things happen, in Southeast Queens, it depends on what the community is telling us, their input, whether or not we can make that happen for them, and how much it means to us to put that in play when it comes to negotiations. So, absolutely. Yeah.
Derry, can you just pronounce your name and then high school that you graduated or currently?
So my name is Derry.
Hi, Derry.
I am an freshman to Syracuse University.
Yay.
And I have a question we have on my DC, and we're curious to know what are you guys about to do to support education in every high school as well as raising those in here?
Great question. What is the council going to do to support the efforts that we're putting forth in Councilmember Joseph's legislation regarding journalism and newspapers? First of all, we've got the bill going, thanks to you all. So that's, that's the first and most critical thing, is that this has to happen once it passes the city council. And it's, of course, it's something else where the council most definitely, when it comes to items, particularly around our students, we like to put our money where our mouths are. So where it takes, you know, the funding to make it happen for our students, the council is absolutely going to support in a funded capacity as well. Thank you, Derry. Look who you're asking. It's not on topic.
Thank you. Speaker, on...
Speaker, on Randy Mastrow, which honestly is kind of off-topic since you guys are formally accepting the nomination today. Have you made up your mind where you're standing on this nomination, and do you think there's any chance that this nomination is not going to be confirmed by this council?
Great question. Thank you, Chris. I take the lead from my members, particularly when it comes to appointments to different places, shared spaces between the administration and the council. The process is going to start, as you said, formally after receiving the nomination at today's stated meeting, and then we've got a hearing on August 27th to hear from the nominee and the public. So we're going to get a full scale of everything that everybody's been asking about for months. We'll finally get it aired out in the public space where it should be, and we'll see what happens from there.
What are you hoping to hear from a confirmation hearing like this?
Well, I've heard, I've heard from him personally, we have met, so I've heard from him personally, so he will be sharing those things, I'm sure. And just hoping to hear more about his record, more about how collaborative energy can be used for both sides of City Hall.
So in other words, you haven't made up your mind until yet and where you stand?
I have not. I will be curious to know what goes on in those hearings. And again, you know, I take a lot of input from my members who will have a lot to say, you know, about the nomination itself. Yeah?
Ethan?
Ethan?
Speaker, I had a couple of questions about lawsuits, so, well, possible lawsuits. So regarding the solitary ban bill, where do things stand with that? I know Ramani talked about possibly taking legal action, and then also with City Peps, I know your office talked about wanting to appeal the decision tossing out the suit a couple of weeks ago.
As far as solitary is concerned, we are considering our legal options to ensure compliance with the law, but the fact is, Ethan, that we shouldn't be in the position in the first place to deal with this, where the executive branch is abusing its authority to defend solitary confinement, which makes everybody less safe, as we know. Declaring a state of emergency simply to block a law from going into effect on the day before its effective date is an unprecedented abuse of power. So we're going to be taking a, taking a look at our legal options where that's concerned. As far as City Peps is concerned, once again, we strongly disagree, which you know, with the decision, and we do a plan to appeal in a higher court. So we'll have more to say on the impact once that happens. Thank you.
Hi, Speaker.
Hi, Kelly.
How are you?
I'm good, thank you.
I have a couple of different questions following up on Mastrow.
Yep.
I know you said you haven't made up your mind, but what type of conversations or things you're telling your members going into that hearing? I know many of them have made up their minds, but are you telling them to give them a fair chance? You know, what do those conversations look like? I also wanted to ask you, there's currently support for those legislation that would require hotels to be licensed. Where do you stand on that proposed legislation? And if you agree with it, how do you manage the safety concerns the bill seeks to address with sex trafficking, with the potential for added costs to the hotel industry?
Okay, thank you. Again, with Randy Mastrow's nomination and the members, the hearing will be our determining factor. Once the members have a chance to present their questions to Mr. Mastrow, I think that is going to be even a greater help as far as, you know, perceptions, record, all of those things. As far as the hotel bill is concerned, you know, what we're seeing is a bill going through the legislative process, and it really is a testament to the value of a legislative process that's transparent and allows for public input, really, as opposed to what the Charter Revision Commission did. So we will be seeing this legislation through. We've had a lot of input so far on what the final, final will look like, and that's what we're dealing with right now, trying to, you know, get to what that final will look like.
And one last question. The races for 2025, the primaries are shaping up. Some of your members who are term-limited are getting involved in some of those races. I wanted to know if you're supporting any of them, you've spoken to any of them, what are your thoughts as we go into next year?
I've spoken with a few of, a few of them have spoken with me, I'll put it that way. I don't want to know anything. But, you know, the reality is, for me, it's still really, really early to make any determinations, you know, endorsements, whatever we want to call it. It's really, really early in the process, you know, for me to make any of those determinations. It's just interesting for me, as I'm sure it is for you also, to just watch, as predicted, how the dominoes fall, you know, once one falls, how the others fall. So it's been an interesting thing for me to watch over the past week or so, you know. I'm excited about watching, but for me, it's still early in the process.
Will you just be watching from the sidelines or do you plan to get involved?
Ooh, no comment. Let's just keep watching those dominoes.
Can you clearly say your first name and graduating school or current high school?
Um, hi. My name is...
Hi.
......
Great.
And my questions around restorative justice and decolonization of city. Can I know the overall budget for restorative justice paths and for restorative justice just in terms of, you know, how does the council plan to further the commission? Can you then fund it for...
Thank you. That's a great question about restorative justice, and, you know, as you mentioned the $70 million, and through that allotment, I think that it tells a really, really great story of the council's commitment to restorative justice and our commitment, you know, to maintaining those programs. What we're going to continue to do, like I said for, you know, the question, a previous question, which had to do with a lot of our concern in the council, is that we continue to support those programs. You know, we're not going to shy away from supporting things that we think are going to uplift our youth first and foremost, you know, and others in, you know, in our society that need, that need our help and need our support. So we're going to continue to do what we have to do. We're going to continue to make sure that we have the best organizations, programs involved. As individual council members, we're really, really close to the programming in our different districts, so we're going to continue to keep an eye on that and stay very, very close to those programs, those providers, and take a look at the results also that those programs produce. That's our commitment. Thank you.
Speaker, your rhetoric against the mayoral administration is really strong, but what's next? I mean, what are you going to do to fight back? You just mentioned some lawsuits, there's a potential of getting involved that way, but like with the CRC, you know, you didn't sue over it. Are you planning on trying to campaign against, you know, telling people to vote no in November? And, yeah, what is your response of action to the administration's power?
Yeah, thank you for that question, Jeff. I think that we were really clear on the day that the commission voted that we do not support the, their proposals for several reasons, and some of them I did state in the beginning. So as far as campaigns against, we don't really have anything, you know, amped up yet to answer that question, but I can let you know that whatever our response is, it will be very, very vocal.
Okay, so back to Mastrow, I don't think you really answered this. So just trying to suss out lobbying efforts by the mayor behind the scenes. So have there been any discussions between you and the mayor, or the mayor and anyone on your leadership team about confirming the mayor's pick for the corporation council?
No.
Okay, so when you met with Mastrow, that wasn't ever coordinated by the mayor?
Well, you're injecting the mayor into those conversations, so that's what I was responding to, so no. The meeting between myself and Mr. Mastrow happened because Mr. Mastrow requested a meeting, as he has with several council members, if not pretty much a whole.
No.
No.
Was it a meeting?
Not to me, no.
What was the meeting like?
Hey, Chris.
Chris, you're out of order.
Small little... Yeah, for us, it's a meeting.
What was, it was a meeting, it was a, it was a meeting, like we'd have...
The IBO had a report this morning about how much money could be saved off your elections and move even years, I know, a couple of them have resolution about this. Are you planning to move that forward, vote on it anytime soon? And following on to Kelly's question for yourself, Speaker, I think Deputy Speaker, multiple of your term-limited colleagues looking forward to 2025. Are you going to, are you planning to run for another office in 2025 or look outside elected office?
As far as the IBO is concerned, I liked the article. I like the thought behind the article, and I would like to see some more energy. I don't know, Sandra, if you want to add anymore, since you've got a bill in there.
I have, you know, yeah, there is a resolution. I do have a resolution that do change the elections. I do believe in it, that's why I introduced it. I think it's, you know, better, it increases voter turnout. Frankly, that's where I was looking at it, to make sure that, you know, all communities have the, you know, better opportunity to come out to vote. And studies have shown that, you know, if you change it to even-year elections, that more communities of color will come out to vote.
Other plans to record, I know it's a state action, but...
Well, we're still, as with everything else, my standard answer is always going through the legislative process, and we'll see where we get to at the end of it. Yeah.
2025?
Oh, 2025, ooh, that's easy for me to answer. I pretty much answered it. For me, it's still very early in the process. Personally, I'm really, really thankful to have, you know, multiple options available. I come from corporate world, and I've also been in, been an elected official for over seven years, so I have the best of both worlds at my feet. I'm really happy. So as I, you know, said to Kelly, let's keep an eye out for those dominoes.
Is there any comment on the decline of the...
As far, well, what I will say is that I think that folks are conflating the pandemic outdoor dining emergency actions with now the post-pandemic legal actions and, you know, the efforts that now, you know, have come forward, which I believe regulation is necessary because that was an emergency situation.
Is there any thought about, maybe you'd round again for prosection?
Well, I think the law is the law right now, and that's where we stand, or where we are. Thank you. Thanks, everybody. Who wanted the picture?
Oh.
Students.
Hold on.
Even if they do this...
I was like, every time...
I'm very...
I do.
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 I do.